Fourteenth City Council Meeting to order. And, uh, first item tonight, I guess all councilors are present and accounted for. Public input, anyone that would like to speak to council about anything on the agenda or not on the agenda, if you'd ask them to step forward right now, keep their name at the microphone. No public input tonight? Any conflicts of interest from any of the council members on any agenda items? No? Consent agenda tonight. Minutes from April 24th, June 26th, July 10th. Financials for June and July. And liquor and amusement licenses for two of the local businesses. Any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? I did note that you say on here July 17th meeting, minutes July 17th meeting? I have the minutes for July 10th in my package. I just noticed when I was looking here. Is it consent agenda for July 17th or July 10th that we have?
It's July 10th.
July 10th, I think.
It's July 10th.
So it should be July 10th on the first page?
Yes. That's an oversight when I was proofing the agenda, sorry.
All right.
Move to accept.
All those in favor? Passed. Uh, is there a reason the financials are such a condensed version?
We were just looking at trying to simplify things for the council and minimize the number of trees that were being taken down as possible, but, you know, we're happy to share the large, if you'd like it.
I, well, I certainly, I think, and Wanda knows, I go through the financials. I like numbers, so I would like the full version. I mean, anybody else on council does find if they're satisfied with just this condensed version?
We are the most, we are the most forested state in the state.
True.
So you're saying we've got plenty of trees.
All right. Uh, bid openings, we don't have any awards and appointments. I guess we have, we have some of our directors in that here tonight that have made quite an achievement in the last little while, and I'd like to recognize them tonight. We have Chief Scott Soucy from the Fire Department who is now certified as the highest grading that you can be for Fire Chief here in Maine, uh, which is quite an accomplishment. I don't know how many there are in the state, Scott, that...
Very few.
Very few, that's what I thought. And Chief Mike DeHagen from the Police Department has received the Community Partner Award from the Maine Children's Trust. And Jane Farren, our city clerk, is now Maine Town and City Clerks Association Lifetime Certification. Now Jane, I've got a question for you. If you, if you rig election, do you lose the certification? Can you lose this certification at any time?
Um, no. I don't believe so.
All right, your lifetime for doing it. That means you can do what you want now.
Yep. Perfect.
Now, what do you mean now?
And also Christina Kane Gibson, who has received her degree in Certified Public Communications from the Texas Christian Institute, so our university. And I, I just, I just want to add, I don't know, I don't think the people in Caribou realize how lucky they are that we have so many people that work for us in the city that are so dedicated and do so much here. And I'm talking, not just trying to keep up with, you know, training and so on, but that volunteer their time and everything else for the city of Caribou. I mean, we all talk about Thursdays on Sweden Street and what a great deal it is. And I can tell you, if it wasn't for the volunteer time, and I stress volunteer time, by the many people that work for the city here and putting that on, we wouldn't have Thursday night on Sweden Street. And I don't think a lot of our citizens realize that when they see Chief DeHagen or Scott Soucy or Gary or Mr. Willett down there, that they're volunteering. They're not being paid to be down there. They're volunteering because they have an interest in the city of Caribou and making this a great place for everybody. So, again, as well as the rewards and everything else they get, I just want to thank them all for everything they do with their own free will to help out the city of Caribou. Formal public hearings we don't have tonight. New business and ordinances, 2016 Audit Report, presentation by Felch and Company.
Hello, I'm Giselle McDonald. With Felch and Company here in Caribou, we do the city audit. I think you all have a copy of the report. Should be in a maroon cover.
I don't know if we all do. I don't think so.
You passed them out during the last meeting?
That's why we don't. Go ahead, Giselle.
Okay. So, first I'd like to point out that this covers the calendar year of 2016, okay? The balance sheet is as of the end of 2016, the city's fiscal year. The opinion on the financial statements, which is on page one, is a clean opinion. It states that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next page I'd like to point out is Exhibit A. It is on page 11. It's called the Statement of Net Position and is essentially the city's balance sheet. This is on the Full Accrual method of accounting, so it includes all of the capital assets, the long-term debt, and so forth. The total current assets of the city were about nine and a half million. The total assets amounted to about 28.4 million. Total liabilities were 2.3 million for a total net position or equity of 26.4 million. Almost eight million of that is unrestricted, okay? I'm going to go through this in a very general manner. If anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to stop me and ask, I don't mind. Exhibit B is a statement of activities. This is equivalent to the income statement. It includes the expenses by program. The total expenses for each of the functions of the city was 14.9 million. There were program revenues, whether they were charges for services or operating and capital grants totaling four and a half million for a net cost to the city of 10.4 million. The general revenues which covered this net cost amounted to 11.4 million for a total increase in the net position of just under 1,915,000. So net position went from 25.5 million to 26.4 million during the year. Then we move on to Exhibit C. This is another balance sheet. It's in a different format, a different method of accounting is used to prepare it. The, it's more focused on the current assets of the town, those assets that will turn into cash or are cash. So it's excluding the capital assets and the long-term debt. The total governmental funds had total assets of 9.5 million. Liabilities totaling a million two for net fund balance of 8.4 million, okay? The following page is Exhibit D. This is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, same method of accounting as before. All expenditures for fixed assets, debt service payments are treated as expenditures in this case. We have total revenues of 16.3 million, total expenditures of just over 16 million for an increase in fund balance of $221,000 for the year. The following two exhibits, E and F, are there to reconcile the two sets of statements that we just talked about, those that are on the Full Accrual method that included fixed assets and those that were on the Modified Accrual that did not include them. So the major difference here is the treatment of the capital assets, and that's what's shown in Exhibits E and F. Following that are some fiduciary funds that the town, or city rather, sorry, has direction The notes to the financial statements follow this with lots of detail about the accounts. There's a breakdown in here on the capital assets, the long-term debt, a lot of discussion about the Maine PERS, the retirement plan, there are certain employees that participate in this, and the accounts that are associated with that. Finally, I'd like to talk a little bit about the budgetary comparison. That's on Supplement Number One, which is on page 33. Thank you, Gary, for making me put page numbers on these, it's making it easier for me. Oh, well. Okay. So we have, the General Fund is the budgeted fund here, so this is just the General Fund. We had total budgeted revenues of 13.3 million and actual revenues of 13.6 million. We had budgeted expenses of just under 13.3 million and but actual expenditures of just over 13 million. When combined with capital outlays that were made during the year, um, these were transfers to the reserve accounts for a pretty level fund balance. Fund balance didn't change, didn't change a lot during the year on a budgetary basis. Are there any questions?
Any questions from anyone in council? Thank you very much, Giselle.
Okay, very welcome.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is Discussion and Action Regarding Credit Enhancement Agreement Between the City of Caribou and Neil Griffiths. And I guess council, at a workshop, talking about credit enhancement agreements and that it only has been drawn up and presented to Neil, but it has not passed in council by the way.
Correct.
So is there any more discussion on this credit enhancement agreement from council?
Mayor, if I might just point out, I've not, I've not received a confirmation from Mr. Griffiths that he is okay with all of these terms, so if you took action on it tonight, we could certainly take it back to him and say, this is what it is, and see what he says, or you could table it to your next agenda item till we have confirmation from Mr. Griffiths that he's okay to move forward.
Well, we could approve it and then go from there, okay?
Could I get a motion to approve the credit enhancement agreement?
Second.
All those in favor?
So at this point, this will be forwarded on to the state. They have to still authorize it, but also make sure Mr. Griffiths is okay with things.
Next item is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Contract with Sewell for Cable Franchise Renewal Consulting. Is there, there's no one here from Sewell?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So Mayor and council, this was acted upon by Prescott during their last city council meeting, and the Sewell is, what they're trying to accomplish is if both cities will enter into this agreement at the same time, they'll cut both cities a break. They'll take $5,000 off of their fee. But perhaps they can present to you a little bit more about what that 15, 10 to 15,000 dollar fee would include and why you might want to consider it.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Mike Etchum. I work for the James W. Sewell Company. Some of you know me from my years in Arusta County. I'm from Limestone originally, and I started in cable television right here in Caribou in 1980. So I retired from Time Warner Cable last year, so after 36 years in the industry, I went to work for James W. Sewell. I worked for their Utilities and Telecommunication Division, and one of our services is franchise renewal consulting for cities and towns in Maine. The proposal that I've sent to the city is, you know, an A to Z turnkey franchise negotiations. We'll go through the whole process of renegotiating the franchise for the city of Caribou. Prescott did sign their agreement on August 2nd, so if the city joins, there will be the discounted rate. And the proposal pretty much lays it out. You want me to go through the whole proposal, or?
I don't know. Council want it here at all, or have you read it, or?
I've read it.
I guess, is our contract up with Spectrum or Time Warner or whoever? Or is we have another year on our contract?
2019 is, is when our franchise is up.
So we're, we're committed till 2019? Yeah. So, I mean, I don't think we're even in a position to renegotiate.
Well, under federal law, you go into the negotiations window three years prior. So the city actually went into the window in 2016, and the former manager actually started negotiations, but they just kind of fell away when, when he left.
Well, you know, there's some things I'm not real smart about. And I don't understand why somebody has to negotiate our contract with Time Warner or Spectrum or whatever. And is it my, is, am I correct in my understanding that if we negotiate a better contract, that they pay us more money? All that does is go on to the cable fees for every citizen? Is that correct?
Well, the franchise fees is a small part of the cable contract. You know, the cable contract goes from between 10 and 15 years, I'm not sure what your current one runs, but, so you, you don't do it very often. So now is the opportunity to get the best possible deal you can get. Some of the items you can put on the table, one is cable expansion, putting cable TV out where there is no cable TV, but with that also goes internet and broadband expansion, because everywhere Charter serves with cable TV, they also serve internet. So during franchise negotiations, that's a good time to negotiate that expansion and possibly get, get a few more roads cabled, and then broadband goes along with it. You can also negotiate equipment upgrades for your local channel. That's a time to do that.
But am I wrong in thinking that if you negotiate any of those things, that increases their cost, that the cost of the cable is going to go up?
Uh, I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor.
They take that rate out of their profits and forget about it, do they?
Well, the cable rates are pretty much set, certainly, I don't know if I can say nationwide, but statewide. I mean, I pay the same cable rates as you pay up here in Caribou with Charter. The only variance between communities that I'm aware of is the franchise fee. Some communities don't have a franchise fee and some do. If you have a franchise fee that's passed on to the customer, it's a line item in the bill, looks like a tax, we can't call it that, but it walks and quacks like one, so the other, all the other items are negotiable. They may, they may or may not affect, you know, the customers' rights.
I don't look, I'm the only one here. Anybody else got any thoughts about this?
This would be the first time, to my knowledge, that we would have, that we will enter into a contract to, contract, correct? Because I think most of the, the last few that I think we've just been negotiating at the manager level, correct? I don't recall, I believe so, I don't recall an agency such as yours, Mike, you know, being involved the last time we did this.
Right.
And I think even back in 2005 through '07, I don't think even back then we did it.
We're good till 19.
But the process has actually already started, like he says. I mean, I do recall the manager saying that he had, he had engaged with them. And some, some of it was probably pushed on the back burner, because I think they were waiting for Spectrum to come in and see what they wanted to do and so on and so forth. By the time they came in is about the time he was leaving, so that's probably about where it's at.
Charles, your mark.
Mr. Manager, what do you think? We need this?
From, I guess from my standpoint, I've, I've dealt with broadband companies, but not in necessarily the direct renewal of franchise agreements. You know, I've, I've dealt more with telecommunications and the towers and creating easements. So there may be some expertise there that we could take advantage of. As far as the, the funding of the fee, there, there was built into the budget a $50,000 line item for broadband expansion, which I understand is not moving forward for the council's direction. There is some funds there, but I know the mayor and I talked about this, and he raised a good question of, could you, what's the likelihood of actually finding a initial $10,000 to, to offset the cost of the services that are being offered?
Yeah, I mean, what are you, are you going to save us any money in this process?
Not really.
Well, it's, it's hard to say yes or no. I mean, you want to get the best possible deal you can get, so I can certainly do that. I've been in the industry, I, you know, the people I worked with doing negotiations on the Charter side are still there, so, uh, you know, you mentioned broadband expansion, and we can certainly explore the daylight straight out of that and try to get everything you can get as far as getting broadband into the areas that don't currently have it.
I notice you keep saying try. What are they going to say now?
I can't stand here and guarantee you anything, it's negotiations.
What are they just saying now? We're not going to do that. Why do you say, well, we're going to switch to number X cable company instead?
Well, the actual franchising process favors the cable company. You're pretty much prohibited from kicking a cable company out of town unless, you know, they're financially insolvent, they're legally incapable, they're technically incapable. There's a lot of reasons you have to come up with to kick them out of town, because they have a major investment in the town. They also are required by law to meet the needs and interests of the town or the city, and that's what this process does. It identifies the needs and interests of the city, takes them to Charter, and then you negotiate what the city believes are, you know, in their, your best interest.
I don't, I don't see that we have much bargaining power, but we could set the franchise fee so high that people wouldn't buy cable and go, so that's a little bit of bargaining power. It's already five dollars a month, isn't that enough? It's plenty. I'm just saying you need leverage. We have, we have nothing. As, as the mayor says, they're going to say, that's the package, do what you want with it. What, what do you think the success rate is, is to get them to cover the underserved or non-served areas of Caribou, as an example? The last mile, you must have heard that all your life.
Yep, yep, we're working on it everywhere. You know, it's hard to tell. We're working with, I'm working with about 20 towns right now in Maine, so, uh, one project we're in the middle of is Mount Desert Island. We negotiated a 25-mile line extension. The cost of that project is $720,000. Charter's putting in over $400,000 of it. Now, the city, the town of Mount Desert bonded $300,000, but their, their goal is 100% coverage of the whole, and I know that's not apples and apples between Mount Desert and Caribou, but, but that's, you know, we were in the middle of that. We've also done a, a lot of Connect Maine grants. I've done a lot of Connect Maine grants on behalf of, when I was working for Time Warner for the towns, and now we're doing them for towns.
So then that's a public-private relationship, establishing better broadband service and cable TV.
Right, for broadband, but the cable TV, you know, the franchise, you can leverage your franchise towards those public-private partnerships as well.
Okay, thank you.
You keep calling it Charter. Is that, is Spectrum part of Charter?
Yeah, same company.
Oh, okay.
Spectrum is their brand name and Charter is the parent company. I should call them Spectrum and make, make it easier for everybody, I guess.
Well, I'd support it if you could guarantee that we could go in that room, turn the switch on, and it works every time. Because it hasn't worked much in the last three, four years.
But certainly something we could address with them, yes. And that, you know, and that's part of negotiations is equipment upgrades for your local channel.
Well, the thing about it is that we've upgraded the equipment in this building more times than Time Warner, or even Spectrum has upgraded the head end, so to speak, and that seems to be every, the majority of the time where the problem seems to be. And that creates little to no volume, or sometimes no picture and all that stuff, and you sit here and you beat your head against the wall trying to figure it out, and you have customers out there saying, what happened to the council meeting? You know, so, you know, that's just a small part of it, too. What do we get for $10,000, Michael?
You're, what I told Prescott, you're going to get the best possible franchise you can get. That, that's all I can promise.
So, I mean, have you looked at our agreement? Do you see things in there that you think can be improved upon greatly?
Uh, it's...
Do you see things in there that are worth $10,000 to us to have upgraded or made different?
That's possible. It's tough for me to talk about it in public, it really, because when you get into negotiations, it really should be an executive session, so I don't really want to kind of constrain here in a public forum.
Well, you want to wait till the end of the meeting? No, we can't wait until the executive session for that. Yes, we could, yes, yes. You want to wait till the end of the meeting and the end of the executive session?
I'm at your pleasure.
Is that all right with council to do that? Find out if there is something that can be done?
Fine, fine, we meet.
All right, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we've got action regarding, discussion, action regarding quit claim of property map 38, lot 75, DeBarbous Berry. Are these all, do these all fall together here? That answer?
No.
Okay.
One's a, one's a purchase of, one that was put out for sale previously.
Oh, right.
And then the other two were corrections to some properties that got overlooked when they got paid for and did cleaning up deed action.
All right, DeBarbous Berry. Motion to issue a quick one date for DeBarbous Berry.
Second.
All those in favor? Passed. The next one is Discussion and Action Regarding Quit Claim of Property Map 5, Lot 75, 800 East Prescott Road to Event Seaman. Motion to issue a quick one date to Event Seaman.
Second.
All those in favor? Approved. Discussion and Action Regarding Quit Claim of Property Map 4, Lot 24B, located at 245 West Prescott Road to Dana and Marsha, Marcy Ursi. Motion to issue a quick one date to Dana and Marcy Ursi.
Second.
All those in favor? And now we have Discussion and Action Regarding Recreational Capital Project Defense Relocations at the New Teak Park.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Last week, two weeks ago, I met with the National Guard, Mayor Marker, and Council Phil McDonough, over with the gentleman from Augusta, to discuss the possible movement of the fence around their National Guard building behind the current wellness center right now. As you, we all know... As you, we all know, top left corner of the picture is gonna be the new Teague Park. And the land that we're getting from the school is, is not the same amount of property size as we're giving up. So we've been working with National Guard on movement of some fence lines, and they have agreed to do it, or agreed to allow us to do it. So where you can see the red line, that's gonna be the new fence line. It needs to be 100-foot setback from their building. And we've also negotiated with moving their, moving their gate. So their gate's gonna come right in off of North Street. It has to be moved back a little bit to allow the, this gate that's currently here is now gonna be moved here, and the gate that's here is gonna be moved here. They need to have two entrances or an egress out. What that's gonna do, it's gonna straighten up. A lot of things up on our property. It's gonna clean up a lot of lines and allow us to move their fuel pad to another location. And I got good news on that last week. The fuel pad is just a concrete pad. It doesn't have to have any burn containment at all. It's just a concrete pad. They have their own portable containment that will sit on top of this concrete pad, which makes it a lot easier for us to go ahead and move it. If I've got permission from the council, I am gonna start working with our vocational center and the high school to start working on the ground over here at the National Guard where the orange, orange mark is. I went and spoke with the commander last week, and he said, just let me know what I gotta do, and I'll move the backgoes out of the way. You can do what you want on the property. So I'd like to be able to start moving fences this year. We got, we still have several months before the ground freezes. I'd like to move it all this year. That way there, when we start tearing apart the school and building our new park, those lines are gonna be straight, and we know where we're going. Every piece of, every plan that's coming in right now from PDT Architects is still showing the fence where it is, the yellow lines. They're not gonna stop drawing those in their plans until the fence is moved, until it's a done deal. So I'd really like to get that moved this year, as Manager Marker put down in the memo. We did get some prices. The only price that I've gotten so far was to move the one next to the 2016 approved fence move. That's the only price we've got. If I can get approval from council, I would like to work with, with the contractor and figure out a price to move everything. We believe we can reuse some of the material. Chain link fence in, in grass over years becomes a nightmare to work with. A lot of their fence is relatively new. I believe we can reuse a lot of it. The, the vertical pipe posts are probably what's gonna have to be bought, purchased new. This has to be a 24-hour secured area. I can't take the fence down one day, and the next day the guy comes in and puts the new fence in. So we'll, but the fence fabric and the horizontal, horizontal pipe rails, we should be able to reuse. The barbed wire, he says, once you pull the barbed wire down, it make, it makes it very difficult to work with. A roll of barbed wire is relatively inexpensive, inexpensive. So I want to, I'd like to get this, this action moving here, only because it's gonna clean up our area. It's gonna make the backside of our rec center look a lot more presentable when we do end up by having our new, our new park. It's still a military installation behind us, but with a little bit cleaner of lines, I think we could, we'll definitely be able to live with it. And what I'd like to do, if I get your blessing to do this, I can get a better price once I, once I go back and talk to them and, and see what all needs to be done. The gate move is not gonna be a simple move. We do, it does have to be moved back. And the guard indicate that everything that you're gonna do on our property, you're paying for it. We're not doing it. Because they don't have, they don't see the need to move it. But I think we, we do see the need to move this stuff.
This doesn't fall under those all-inclusive expenses the school told us about?
No, no. The school, the PDT feels that the parcel of property they're giving us is more than adequate enough for us to put our new park in.
All right.
Any other question?
Do you need approval?
I need, I'd like to have approval, Mayor, to allow me to go out to the contractor, walk the grounds with him again, and get a finalized price. And then we also will do some of the work in-house, and I haven't asked Mr. Willett yet, but I'm sure that Mr. Willett will help. Thanks, Dave.
All right. Is that orange pad in front of their loading platform there?
It's on the, it's on the side.
It's on the side of it?
It's on the side, and what Mr. Kirk was saying, with it being where it's gonna be, there, there's still his room for them to drive around. When they come in, they, they'll still be able to drive around the fuel pad, back onto it, or get around when they have their big convoys.
Okay.
Any other questions? We need a motion to go ahead to, I don't know if you need a motion to get pricing or not? We could just go ahead and do it?
What, yeah, that's why I asked my question. What's the total cost, do you think?
Current, it's hard to say, Dave.
10,000?
Oh, definitely. Mr. Martin, the first price that I got from him was just the movement of the, the top line next to the 2016. It was about 25, but that was included, everything new. I think we can, we can do a lot of it ourselves. He could put the pipes one day, and then we take the fence fabric down and he installs the fence fabric. I'm not a fence installer. It, it takes, it takes the proper tools and everything. There has to be concrete laid. That was 2,500. I would dare say to do it all, we're gonna be probably within the 10 range. That I would, I'm gonna, hopefully, that's gonna be for the new fuel pad as well, with Public Works helping out and Vocational helping out. We possibly can get Site, uh, SiteL, Job Corps to help with laying the concrete down.
Eric, can I let you make a motion to allow them to, to do this project?
I think his, his request now is he wants to go ahead and get the final price.
I'll get it.
But why wait? We're not gonna meet for a month. I mean, unless it's 20,000.
If it's, if it's, if it's an egregious amount, I'll, I'll bring it back to Ma, Manager Marker, and we'll get back with you guys. I don't see me getting anything done within the month of breaking anything down. And I can definitely meet back with you guys in September. That's not an issue at all.
Cost is gonna be inclusive with moving the fence and the gates.
Yep.
You could certainly set a maximum amount tonight if you'd like, and if it goes over, that has to come back.
Yeah, I'd like to set a maximum amount of $15,000 to do this project.
Second? All those in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Got that money in reserve?
Yep.
You guys, you're gonna stay right there?
I'm gonna stand right here. I'm gonna stay right here, Mayor Eakin. The memo didn't get put on to the, to your agenda on the next project at Collins Pond, which would be the, the pad, the overlook that I spoke about earlier this spring where we transferred the property with, with Mr. Sam Collins. I've been working with BRSA to design us a, a overlook pad and some improvements, some erosion improvements to the, the piece of property that we've received from SW Collins.
And where it is, is in this area. They've already moved, put their fence in here. Their new stockade fence is here. This fence needs to be removed. But this is the area of interest that I'd like to address with a, wow. Now, I'm in the, I'm in it now. So I'm not the little yellow man, but these trees I want to remove. There's some erosion issues going on down, down, going down to the brook that can be remedied relatively easily. I don't believe, we, we do not take advantage of our water at all in our, in our community. There's a great location there to put a nice overlook deck with a handicap ramp, allow fishing, allow more better access down to the water's edge, and also highlight our, the grist mill foundations. There's two foundations right here, one on this side and one on the other side. And in the plans, they built the deck, they wrapped part of the deck around it to, not only to protect the, it's also to highlight the.
Oh, no, that's, sorry.
Moving too fast. The grist mill foundation is right, is right here. So we'd have a curved, paved, stopped here with a, a flat landing, and then onto the, onto the wooden ramp, metal railings with an L shape right here to highlight the grist mill foundations. The other one is on the other side of the stream, obviously. That's, that's historical, you know, that's historical for Caribou. That's what Caribou was built on. So I think there's some, some good opportunities here to, to be able to do something. I'd like to see this whole area all riprap rocks and blend it into the deck, just to make it more of a natural look. I don't want to, I don't want to use anything other than riprap. Riprap is natural. All along the both sides of the stream are all big rocks now. They look good. I think we can, we can add to the locate, we can add to the, to the walkway, which is one of our best assets for, for healthy, for being a healthy community, is that walkway. It's been, it's been going since 97, and I would dare say, it's hard to say, we never put a counter on the walkway. But there's a, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people that use that walkway. So I'd like to add something else to that, to that little location. And we do have the money in the reserve account for Collins Pond with the money that was transferred last year from Mr. Collins. And there's some other monies in that account that I'd like to be able to proceed with this project. I'd like to get some R, an RFP on this and see where we would, where, where we would go with this project.
Do you have projected costs?
I have no projected costs. It's hard to project anything without a set of plans. Now that I've got a set of plans, I'd like to put it out and, and see what we get, local contractors, and see what we can get for, for building it and for, you know, carpenter contractor to, to build the deck and stuff like that, but also a contractor to come in, place the riprap and upgrade the parking lot. Because we'd be doing something new, we have to have one, I'm not planning on paving the lot. It's a gravel lot. I'd like to keep it as gravel because asphalt is expensive, but I do have to pave one handicap spot.
What would, what would you approve last name was let you go forward to get this engineered?
Just to get it engineered, just make.
Now you're asking to go for.
I'd like to go out to RFP to see where we're gonna be at, see if I can cover it with what we've got in, in, in the account.
All right, I'll make a motion that would allow Gary to put this over to this.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, question?
Yeah. How far up the stream?
Excellent que, um, from, it's about 300 feet from there to the head wall of the dam. And while we bring this up, and I know I'm gonna.
Go to skew for a little bit. And how close was I, 534?
Alex, the crow flies. Oh, let me clear that.
I just got an email today from Maine Conservation Corps. They want to come and do a project in Caribou. And all we've got to do is basically house them. You willing to let them stay at your place?
Yep. How big, how many?
I don't know yet. So it's 500 feet. I want to build a very primitive walking path to the dam. We have, currently, we don't have a very good access to the pond, which is not very pretty right now, but that's another project that I'm gonna hit you guys up on here in a little bit. Very primitive walking trail through the rocks. I walked it with DEP. There's no issues with erosion. It's all big rock. It's just limit of trees and some, some limited signage. So I do want to build a walkway, a path to the head of the dam.
And while you're there with DEP, could it be continued along? Along the pond?
In my hopes, Mr. Martin.
To connect to the trail further up?
I think we can. The, the main issue with the, I don't know if you guys have paid attention to the water levels at Collins Pond at all. Main issue with Collins Pond right now is.
It's not, it's not a pond anymore.
The head wall to the dam has exceeded its life, lifespan. This past spring, the last of the ice must have taken the rest of the head wall out. There is absolutely, all you see is the remnants of the crib work left. There's a little spot right here. You see the original wall, and it's about two feet higher than everything else, but this is all completely gone. That's the reason why there's no more water left.
Got an email last week, Manager Marker sent it to me. It's a capstone project with UMO. It, it involves their engineering students for their senior project. This would be an absolute great project for a senior engineer, for civil engineer, to come in, discuss what we want to do. I'd like to see rebuilding the pond. I'd like to be, see rebuilding the, the dam. I, there are grants out there and an LWCF grant with land and water conservation funds. I can get that grant and apply and, and be able to do a project with, with very little in-house money. So I'm gonna reach out to UMO, to this, to the professor. Fairfield's working on a project right now. They just started with the, with the engineers. So I'd, ultimately, I'd like to dredge the pond, but there's a lot of money there. That's a lot of money. And unfortunately, we can't, we, there's, they don't earmark money anymore in, in DC for special projects. It'd be over a million dollars to dredge the pond. To fix the head wall that's been there for over 100 years, and it's a two, it's about a two-foot wall, we'll put the water back in the pond with some, some engineering. I think we could be successful in doing something and building it out of concrete. I wouldn't build it back out of wood. I'd build it out of concrete. The, the boulders on the bottom side of the dam are five of those desks put together. They're just absolutely humongous rocks. So the pond, the, the head wall is a very stable head wall, but the wood is completely rotten, and the water's just going right across. So I think that's a two, that's a, that's a couple-year project. So you, you guys will see me back, but I am gonna pursue going after a grant. I am gonna pursue going after free engineering. Free engineering is huge, Mr. McDonough.
If you get an, an engineered product for the construction of a new dam, is that something that our local guard could do, or we could?
Potentially, yep.
Them doing that as a project? I know the ones here probably don't have all that quality, but they can source them from other towns or whatever throughout the state.
Most definitely.
They like to do those things.
Yep.
They were underutilized when they, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Mr. Martin?
So where's the alternate landing for the geese this year?
The alternate landing for the geese this year is we're sending them over to Traffin.
Are they gonna come back?
Oh, they're coming. They'll still come. There's still enough water in the pond for them to come over. On the, on the east side of the pond, there's, there's still plenty of water, so, but yeah, I mean, it's a nice soil right now.
They go to the backyard of the first house on the Lombard Road off the Washburn Road.
That's the redemption plot for the cemetery.
They come there, put a burn bed, they won't go in there.
That's, that's it for that, and thank you for allowing me to proceed on the Collins Pond Walkway Project. One last thing, it was in the memo. We've got very good news. The Caribou Rec Foundation met with the Children's Discovery Museum two and a half weeks ago, and they will be donating their funds that they raised for the Discovery Museum back in several years ago. It was never used. They gave it to another place. The monies was never used in the time allotted, so they took it back. It's been sitting in their account. And they're graciously gonna give the foundation $75,383 to go towards the new splash park for the Teague Park project with a couple little, with a couple little things. They want a donor wall, and I have, we have to put up a memorial bench for Marissa Lloyd Foundation, which I don't think is asking too much. So Wednesday, Thursday at 10:30, we were gonna be doing a check signing ceremony at the rec center. This is, this is big news. They, you know, they've, they've had this money for several years, and they want to make sure that it's going to this, to the kids of Caribou and to the Ruska County children. So we're lucky to have it in Caribou.
Is the total cost gonna be on the splash pad?
Uh, I'm still working on some, some numbers right now with their money that they've donated. I, I'd like to see us put in some discovery-style components to it. There's all kinds of things that you can do with water parks, features, such as tidal pools, river runs, dams, and all that kind of things. So I've, I've said that back to Vor. So, uh, I've, I've said that back to VorTeq, the company that we're working with, and I'm just awaiting numbers. Thank you, guys.
Are you gonna talk a little bit about events and marketing?
I can. Uh, events and marketing, Thursdays on Sweden, uh, one more after this one, but, uh, right now, we will not have to use a decision maker, it looks like. It looks like the weather's gonna be good. We've got French toast. The weather's gonna be great. Hopefully, we have a great, uh, great event, a great evening. Um, I see there was a winter in the county. I don't have the memo on, I don't have that part on me. Uh, there was a winter expo that the Central Rushtock Chamber of Commerce was looking into doing, utilizing our wellness center. That has now been negated for this year. Uh, they don't have time to get it going, so it'll be something in the future. Heritage Days, um, we s, we felt that Heritage Days, it needs an anchor point and with all the events that we're doing, we're doing so many events, uh, we're gonna, we're not gonna do the Heritage Days this year. We're gonna combine and we'd like to combine them with Caribou Days. Um, Caribou Days was last, uh, two weekends ago or last weekend, I can't remember now, but, um, always the first weekend of August. We still can do a car show. We can still do, um, our balloon, our inflatables in the park. We can also do, then turn around that evening and go up to the high school and do the band, food up there and then the fireworks. Last two Heritage Days, we didn't, we, we, we didn't do anything with the families or anything, no historical aspects. So plus, we also gotta focus on, there's a big event coming up. Uh, as you guys saw, the banner went up today. Marathon is coming. Um, there's a lot of events. We, we, we wanna try to make, we wanna do quality events. It's not always about having just something to do. Um, we'd like to see quality. I think we put on good quality events, but, um, we, if we combine those two, I think we're gonna be better served. Uh, the banner is not going up over the Benet drive this year. It was compromised in the wind last year. That banner is, is too big to put up over the road. Uh, that's a, that's a four-foot by, uh, forty-foot banner. That's a wind sail. Uh, it was compromised, uh, a little bit. It's gonna be on the ben, on the fence where it is now and I think that's gonna be a good spot for it.
Were there any ports for air flot?
Oh, yeah.
There were, there wasn't?
It's loaded with ports, but the banner itself probably weighs close to a hundred and eighty pounds and you string that up across the road and she's a big wind sail. So, um, I don't know what else we should add down for events. Somebody can tell me. I probably know what's going on, but, um, but this Thursday night, French toast and the weather's gonna be good. No decision maker's gonna be needed. Hopefully, we see you guys all there.
Only other item or one of the others is, uh, Arts and Crafts.
Arts and Crafts, uh, we've got, um, we've been full for months. Um, she's got fifteen that want in extras. So we're working with the school. We gotta meet with the school officials and see if we can put them into the lo, into the lobby entrance of the gym. There's only a few that go there now. I think if we work with them, maybe explain to the vendor that, you know, you were late in signing up, here's a ten-by-ten, that's all we can give you, um, 'cause we can't, we're not putting them in the music room and we're not putting them down the halls. We wanna have everything as much as contained as we can. And, uh, Arts and Craft, the venue has been full for months. I mean, they sign up right away. So that's a big one. That's a good one.
Supplying them?
I, yeah. They did, they want, they're, I know we've put it up, they're still gonna come, 'cause it's the first big Arts and Craft of the year and it's the longest running in the county. So, um, that should be a good, that should be a good one as well, so.
Alright. Thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you.
Reports from, from many of the officer staff committees from the city? I guess we have a few other reports here that weren't into the, uh, many consented yet here. Uh, anyone wanna speak to the reports that they've supplied?
I've got a few things that didn't get into the packet, but I wanna update the council on, if I might.
Uh, just one comment, fire an ambulance? Can we do year-to-date and last year-to-date so we can compare? I don't know why it's gonna change.
That was, that was Miami State Mayor, that, they sent both of those and I addressed up the one, but didn't get the other one to you, but we can send that out to you as well.
Okay. And you have a few things?
Yes, if I might.
Okay.
Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about the school taxes and how much is gonna be returned back to the city to help with reduction of, uh, overall property taxes. Uh, we received the final word that that will be a hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And, uh, in discussions with the school, uh, we've talked about that that would come back to the city in increment amounts, not one lump sum. And so some of it may come in this fiscal year, some of it may come in next fiscal year.
Is it not returning really mean to them, the lump sum? No?
No, there's...
And that's by their?
Well, they, they expressed a lot of concern. We think it's probably a cash flow issue for them and so trying to just work with them to make sure we get the lump, eventually get the total amount will be...
How can extra money be a cash flow problem?
Yeah. Not sure why they're, they're blocking at it, but...
I, uh, would you, I mean, would you inquire? I, I think you're giving a lump sum payment to one of the other members of the RSU?
Okay.
I believe, and if they are, I'd certainly like to know why we're not getting ours.
Okay.
Same way. For everybody's information, that's forty percent is what they gave back, not fifty percent that was recommended by the, uh, governor.
Right.
And there was another amount that I don't think it came back. I think they just reduced their first monthly payment.
No, that was their intention at first to do it that way, but it would become a nightmare for me to separate everything.
No, 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 I'm, I'm not talking part of this hundred and forty-four. There was additional money before that and I'm gonna say if my mind, thirty-six thousand dollars? And I think it was, they used it to reduce their first monthly invoice that they sent us for the school.
Wasn't aware of that.
But you should check to see if... But I think that's how much it was.
So it would've been this first one of this fiscal year, their fiscal year?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we'll look into those two things. Uh, you may have also read in the paper that we were successful in being awarded a hundred thousand dollars, uh, grant money from, uh, the, uh, the border committee. And, uh, thanks to, I guess, the Chief Gehagan and definitely Laura for putting that grant together and we'll be able to use that to help clean up the bird's eye sight. And I received an email today from, uh, from the agency that they're gonna start sending us over all of the hoops that we have to jump through to actually get that money in our hands. So we'll work closely with them on that. Uh, we had a pre-construction meeting today on the tea hanger.
Just before we go off the bird's eye sight, do we, uh, do we have a plan for where we wanna attack next down there? Which buildings or, uh, I mean, was anything ever put in the original plan when we took down the big building as to what would be done next? I mean, I, I think we should probably prepare a plan of how we're gonna attack this, 'cause it's, we're not gonna gig it all at once, that's for sure.
No, I think that remaining grant money was for the remaining buildings. That was a complete, everything down.
About a hundred thousand dollars would take care of...
Taking down.
Taken everything down? Other than foundations?
And move it out or just take it down? And clean?
But the cleaning part was part of our twenty percent.
But then the big job is to take all the foundations and everything else.
It's still gonna be an issue.
That'll be part of the brownfield.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yes, don't forget.
In there behind the, uh, the old office building, there are piles of salvage metal and stuff like that. Who does that belong? 'Cause that's been there for...
Yeah, that, that was part of when Manifin, uh, Forbes were working together. That's where they were separating.
Whose property is it on?
Uh, Deacon's now, the city's.
Well, it was nice of working on it. I mean, that seems, we took it over, so we should probably haul it away and get it looked after.
That's, that's where they were separating some of the metals from the other.
Council McDonough asked me the other day about whether we knew where the, where the exact property lines for our portion of that site is, and I, I don't know if we do.
It's a, it's a word, I think it's up there. Yeah, I'll say.
Have it been, I don't know. It, maybe it should be surveyed, I don't know. And we, we had some discussion about possibly splitting it in two. And if we were gonna survey it, that would probably be the time to do that and decide...
To the benefit for the brownfield is the divide.
Yeah.
Part of that process is per partial. You can ask for certain, per partial. So it would be to our benefit, that'd be part of it.
I think the reason why I keep bringing that up is the fact that, I think that the acquisition of the property by, uh, yeah, anyways, I can't, sometimes that just happens, you know? Sixty-eight years old. It's still maybe some attachment to what's left over there for us to clean up. I think buildings are butting up against each other, maybe even part of one or the other. And I think it is good to define who owns what, access and so on and so forth there, 'cause we don't wanna wait till the last minute and find out that we denied access because it's now private property and so on and so forth.
You mean with Mr. Forbes?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah. Some of it, the fencing, when you put up the fencing, less than four will define some type of guideline.
Yeah.
We didn't put it up.
Yeah, I, I think, and the concern that Council McDonough brought up is what he had discussed with me is, you know, the buildings aren't joined together and there's, there's probably somewhere in that building that it's, this is the city and that's Forbes. And when we take our section down, there isn't gonna be a wall in the end of his, so...
I believe that he's, I believe that Forbes has already knocked his section down.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the property still needs to be defined as to who is what, the pins and stuff, so we don't, you know?
That, that should be surveyed. That, that whether the city sells it, it's, it's, it's all set to go.
'Cause I'm, I'm sure that, that transfer of property there was done by a quick clean deed, no warranty deed too, so...
Listen, we're gonna make that a motion that we have that property surveyed?
Not yet.
Not yet? I mean, do we clean it up first? We gotta clean it up for them, so...
Yeah, we would've given it all to them. Alright, sorry for the interruption, Dennis. Go ahead, airport.
Airport, uh, as I said, we had the pre-construction meeting today on that. The contractor plans to break ground in two weeks and that's when they'll move the earth moving equipment onto the site and, uh, prep that for the pad. They expect that the building itself will be brought onto the site in the middle of September. And so their total, uh, they're planning middle of October to be completely done with the project. So that's the latest on that. The, uh, staying with the Public Works Highway theme, we met with MDOT last week and got some very discouraging news about High Street. They, they met with us and wanted to talk storm drain and all the issues surrounding that, because they indicated it's only a storm drain project. They're not going to be re-leveling or relaying the road in any fashion except for what they disturb with a storm drain project. And so, uh, we're working with them to figure out what the best alignment would be for the new storm drain system. Basically, what they're wanting to do is put a new storm drain pipe on the north side of High Street. They may disturb some sidewalk, some of that road or some of that north shoulder and they'll put back what they disturb. And we're just kinda waiting to see what they finally come up with their, their design.
I should recommend taking it back and forth across the street all the way up.
Yeah.
If you can redo the whole street and then...
Right. So we, uh, Dave mentioned that quite a few years ago, we, we were putting some money aside for kinda revamping that whole street. I know it's in the, uh, the TIF project for enhancement funds for new sidewalks and lighting and things and, uh, we may, we're, we're putting some numbers together to bring something back to you for consideration as far as possible funding sources and...
Do you think there's any possibility, like when we did the downtown, there was some grant money available, although it was like a fifty-fifty deal, was it not?
That project that we did downtown was called a main partnership agreement is what we had entered in and it was considered a fifty-fifty match. Uh, the Public Works Department went in and revamped all the, in order to have any of that money, the sidewalks adjoined to the road that we were working on had to be ADA compliant. So that was one of the conditions that first had to be met. Uh, any of the catch basins that needed either cleaning or rebuilding or toppers put on, that was all money that, uh, could go towards the match, the in-kind match. So that was approximately a three-hundred thousand dollar project and when it was done, I think the city spent around seventy-five thousand dollars. The rest was done through the department, so I, we have, I had started conversations with DOT about doing that partnership on North Main. Uh, it's getting pretty bad from the intersection to the, clear to the hospital. Uh, it's been about nine years since that was repaved. Uh, it's pretty heavily traveled and it, it's there again. It's in need of surface treatment again. Um, they kinda wanted to talk about that when we had our meeting with them and I explained to them that without having asphalt on High Street, that if we do this road first, they'll hang us. So as soon as I get a little bit more information, I, I believe that there can be a partnership with a fifty-fifty cost share for sure on High Street. I guess we'd have to sit down and determine, you know, how far do we wanna go? Do we wanna continue with asphalt sidewalks? Do we want to change the light poles to period lighting to match the downtown or are we just happy with getting a new surface on High Street? So...
I think that's what most people would be happy with.
I think you're absolutely right. So it would be, you know, I, I would make the recommendation that we grind that, set a profile, put at least three to four inches. I'd like to see two inches of a good coarse binder and then a twelve-point-five millimeter on top. Uh, maybe even experiment with some of the different asphals that they have nowadays. Um, we've all seen the new asphalt, that cold mix is what they're calling it, that's on eighty-nine. It will give us a chance to see how that worked out. I'm not sure. It's pretty porous.
Council McDonough?
Uh, High Street, now, back two thousand five, two seven, when I was on the council then, we had a control number to do that project in year X and it went away.
Yep.
Okay. So how much money has the city spent maintaining that road without any state assistance? Can you get that for us?
I can give it to you right now.
Oh, go ahead.
The very, the very first time that we did a minor overlay of about three-quarters of an inch, the city invested forty thousand dollars. About two years ago, it was so rough coming out of City Hall that Public Works went and we hired, uh, Lanes Construction. They milled out the center in between the two ruts and then we, we had them put the asphalt. It was just a, just a quick shim because we were on the docket. High Street was gonna be repaired. This'll get us by until the, it comes. And here we are, two years later and we find out, I was shocked. I, I mean, I'd been hearing rumors of it from different people, but nothing had been said to us, but they are not going to put any asphalt into this project.
Well, we did something in two thousand nine also for the Sesquicentennial.
That's when we did the forty thousand dollar overlay and then...
So how much did it cost the last time you did what you did?
Uh, about eight thousand dollars.
Eight?
Yeah.
Okay, so now, if we come to an agreement with them with this sharing project for the rest of High Street, what's the longevity of that project if it's done the way that you just get done stating?
So we all have sat here and, and, and we've, you know, talked back and forth of what do we expect the longevity of any payment on our state roads? Uh, part of my program said that we should be doing one mile of state highway, which, which we haven't, but to give you an idea, Herschel Street, um, was part of that project we did two years ago. As bad as Herschel Street was, it was delaminating. That surface was only eight years old. So unless we, of course, we'll have a little more surface and it'll be, you know, a little bit different, thicker and whatnot. But I, I don't think we'll see ten years.
It'll be a little more heavily traveled.
It is more heavily traveled.
And what about the bypass, hasn't that reduced traffic or not?
It, it has, but, and we see it especially in the corner of Prospect, right by the church where they turn. We're still having a little bit of movement and pavement there, but nothing compared to like what it was.
Still happens.
That, yeah, it, it does happen. And there are still some trucks, but it has lightened up significantly, we, we see a big difference. I, I think one thing we should keep in mind, and when Herschel Street was done, since my term as being director, the, the material that was used was, was considered a shim mix. When we did this project two years ago, we changed and went to a different product and it's called a nine-point-five millimeter. It's a lot more stony. And if you look at the surface, you can actually see, it's, it's kind of coarse. I chose to do that more than the sandy mix. With the sandy mix, we're, we're getting so much rapid wear that the tires are just ripping it apart. I, I know it's only been two years, but it looks really good here for Herschel Street and down through Record Street. I'm in great hopes that we can get ten years. And I'd like to say that we could get, we should try to target for ten years on High Street. But unless they've come with a different mix, I don't believe we'll get ten years out of it.
Then when's the state going to come and tear it up again later? Do we have any idea when they, they plan on coming back? I don't want to go out there and prematurely enter into an agreement and put off what they may be thinking about doing two years down the road.
No, so, so we were told in the meeting, there was no pavement in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, or twenty.
What if these projects all of a sudden disappear too?
That was one of the concerns we had, is the High Street was supposedly on the radar up until July. And then MDOT reprioritized their roads. And our High Street became a third priority road, while Bennett and the bypass remained the top-two priority road. So with taking High Street down to that third level, it basically said that's not a project we're going to consider right now.
So would you say a minimum of eight years if you did it the way that you just discussed?
I think we can, I, I believe personally that the substructure on High Street is in good shape. And when I talk about that, I'm talking about the gravel surfaces underneath the pavement. We've had the opportunity throughout the years where we'll have to cut a patch out. And when we flip the patch over, it's smooth on the bottom side, but you can see the roll. You can see a little, but it's the surface. The other thing that would support my actions on that is that in the spring of the year, we can go down through there with street vacs and completely clean the streets so that we can paint the lines. And within a month, you can come back and you see all the little black rocks up against the curb. The black rocks are the...
Asphalt.
It's the asphalt and the aggregate that's coming apart. And, and you run into, you run into scenarios where years ago, we had a product that was strong like crazy. But you ended up with a lot of longitudinal cracks. Every short distances, you'd have them cracks that went across the road and your car thunk, thunk, thunk as you go. So they started making the mixtures to be a softer, more pliable for our area. Can contract and expand with the cold weathers and the heat. And what that's done is nowhere near as many longitudinal cracking, but we just can't keep the surface, they wear so rapidly. That's why I'm so much interested into what they've done on eighty-nine and they'll be doing on Route One. It's, it's a whole new mixture type. Actually, a company from, I think it was out of New Hampshire come up to do that. And when you look at the surface, it's so porous, it's unbelievable. And I know they only put that about an inch to an inch and a quarter thick. I'm, I'm going to be real anxious to see what happens. I'm hoping that there's good results out of it, so. But we will have to do something in a partnership, getting back to your question. And I think, I think that it's a good thing that the City of Cariboo's had money put into that Streets and Road account. And, and I know, I've, I've been here long enough to know that that money was put in there for a High Street project, so.
Don't tell them how much you got though.
No. Yeah, so I, I, I was, I was a little bit discouraged that the DOT had informed us that there was no pavement into the project because...
But they are going to pay for the storm drains?
Yeah, and so just so that we're all on the same page, it's the storm drains from Glen Street this way. From, their recollection is that from Glen Street down to the bypass, the pipes are in good shape. And at first, they were talking about the storm drains on this side only being repaired. But there's no repairing them, they're, they're, they're so far gone, they'll have to put new storm drains. And if they are doing that patch, I mean, if they're going to put them pipes in, it will be worth it for the city to have their ducks in a row. And rather than, we'll, we'll try to find a dollar amount of what they're going to invest to put that sidewalk and put that six-foot or eight-foot section of road back in, makes no sense for us to go right behind them and grind another three inches out of it. So we really need to...
Do it in conjunction.
We need to do it in conjunction with. I, I'm not saying that we have to commit to it, although I can stand here tonight and tell you that there will have to be a commitment from the city for some type of partner sharing. And if everyone is in agreeance tonight, I will work with them on the partnership for High Street versus North Main.
Probably information anyway.
Yeah. Go back and see what options you can come up with, David, and then if you've got one that you think is suitable for us, then bring it back to council.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that everyone, I mean, and that's what the purpose was tonight, just so that everyone within the council, the community, knew what was happening. I, I thought it was really important that everyone know. And, and I, I was pretty sure that the council would say, you know, do what we can. But it's always nice to hear that, you know, do what we have to. We, we know we have to fix High Street, we, we can't let that go any further, so.
Are they doing the drains to share, did you say?
No, the drains will be, so originally, a year ago, it was drains in eighteen, pavement in nineteen. Well, I'm smart enough to know that they would have probably fixed and skimcoated, you know, and, and then, and then nineteen, they would have done a full overlay. I, I think there is one other thing, and I mean, it's not all completely dark. But at that meeting, when we expressed our concerns, the, the second-in-command from DOT said that he would go back and see if DOT Region Five, Bob Watson, if he might have some discretionary income that they could use to help with the pavement on High Street. So there's a lot of things to play out, there's a lot of work that needs to be done before we get to there. But I think it's extremely important that we know that we'll have to have some type of buy-in into this program. And like always, I'll do the best I can to mediate, you know, the, the best price we can.
I have one other question. Have the people that you've spoken with up in the upper echelon, have they seen High Street?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Well, so one of them lives in our community.
Good.
And, and the, and the other one, I mean, Bob Watson, Region Five, you know, I, I mean, he's known about High Street for, I, I've been director since two thousand and five. Bob came on shortly after that. And, and I remember sitting in with Manager Buck, having conversations about High Street with, with Bob Watson. And, and then when Manager Buck left, it seemed like it dropped. And we went for a little while and then I, I started with Manager Belize. And we kind of got the ball rolling again and I thought we were heading in the right direction. And, and then they threw us a curveball the other day, so.
High Street's not bad if you just drive down it, it's one you gotta go...
Yeah.
You know, it's, you drive down it, I mean, and that, these fellows here, I don't know, this Watson or whatever, maybe he's just...
You don't even got to hold on your stand.
But...
Got to drive across it.
But are they screwing everybody or just Cariboo? I don't know, I'm serious.
So I, I...
How can you trust them?
So keep in mind, one of the things, one of the things that's important in this whole program is, we are a compact zone. And in being a compact zone, there's, you know, we can make decisions about curb cuts, we can do a lot of things ourselves. But one of, one of the things that we are responsible for by being a compact zone is, is maintenance. So when a catch basin collapses here in town, who amongst you think that that's maintenance or is that infrastructure? We would all agree that the pipes in the ground are infrastructure. We question when the top, you know, when, when the salt gets into the bricks that's on the top and, and the bricks deteriorate. And we've all seen it, a hole right beside it, we're worried about someone falling in. Is that maintenance or is that infrastructure? And I would, I would say so, but if we wait for the DOT, they'll just argue with us, so I fix them before someone gets hurt. Then we come to the real question, when we want to put an inch and a half of asphalt or two inches here on Main Street, or we want to pay to grind it and put three inches, is that infrastructure or is it maintenance? DOT would, would beg, you know, that, that's, that's maintenance. And that's one of the reasons why, and I don't do it every year, and I apologize, but we have twelve miles of state road that's inside our urban compact. Twelve miles. That's North Main, South Main, Washburn Street, Sweden Road, Woodland Center Road, you know, High Street, Bennett Drive. There's twelve miles. And at the given time, if we only did, if we thought that life expectancy could go out as far as twelve years, as far as maintenance, we needed to do one mile per year at a minimum before we would come back around and say, okay, we've got to start all over again. In the last ten years or longer, the only thing that we've invested inside of our urban compact zone is our fifty-fifty percent share down here downtown. We have not done Washburn, we have not paid for Sweden, so. It is, it is what it is.
Yeah, but it comes to, it comes a point in time with the age of the thoroughfare that it's beyond the maintenance aspect or the overlays and so on, as such as High Street, that's a good example.
Yeah.
I mean, you see it, look how long ago they did Route One to Prescott, it's right back, right back.
And it's on the docket for two thousand, two thousand nineteen, is, I, I just, I just seen it come through again. I, I mean, here's another good example, I mean, and I could talk all night if you allow me to, but...
I thought you were going to, David.
Well, I probably will, so be careful when you invite me up, because I'm just a book of knowledge. I, I mean, a good example is Sweden Street. I, I mean, how many years ago was it that we seen Sweden Street was so rough? It was so rough in, by the courthouse, that Public Works went there with cold patch in the end of March to try to do some patching because the complaints were coming like crazy. We got the DOT to put a patch and they said, they asked the manager at the time, do a plan. Tell us what you want your gateway to town to look like, and we're going to design that. What they said they done was a six-to-seven-year patch. And you know what? It done great, it really did. We're, we're at year eight, I'm starting to see fatigue. When I ask about what's going to happen, because they told us a six- or seven-year window, nothing. There is nothing on the scope.
Send the money and we'll do it.
So anyway, I've talked enough. Anybody that has any questions, they can call me tomorrow.
I got two more quick ones, Mayor, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead.
On September thirteenth, we'll have our quarterly Kerry Pines Workshop with the City Council. And so they've invited, they'd like to invite three of you to come and meet with them. And they'll just kind of go through what's happening with the hospitals. And, and so I just want to make you aware of that. And they say there's usually the same three that always come, but that's fine. And if anybody wants to take turns, you guys can fight it over, I guess. But that'll be September thirteenth, and that will be up at Kerry.
Chan Center.
The Chan Center.
Five o'clock?
I'll confirm the time, I believe it is five o'clock, they'll provide dinner, so.
We'll get email.
And then last, we have, we have an update on the tri-community landfill, just wanted to make sure that you're aware of this. I know there's been a lot of concern of, can the tri-community board take action separate from the city councils? And we received an email this last week. There was a discussion from our attorney, or one of our attorneys, that the, because the tri-community landfill board and its whole makeup was established by an inter-local agreement between Cariboo and our, our partner communities, that to allow another community into that partnership requires an amendment of the inter-local agreement. And so the inter-local agreement is a function of the city councils. And if the city councils don't agree to amend that inter-local agreement, it could basically nix having another community become part of this operation. And so we've, our next tri-community meeting is this Friday. And we'll get some more information then. And I believe we're still slated for a tour of the facilities, Mayor, you and I.
Yeah, but is the meeting that date or is the meeting following me?
No, it'll be that same, it'll be that morning, they changed it, they moved it up a week.
Okay.
Could you clarify that? Does this, is this before or after they agreed to let Prescott in?
The inter-local agreement establishes who's going to have voting rights on the tri-community board. And how that's going to basically be set up. And so the board could, I guess, arguably, they could say, we're going to let Prescott come in, but Prescott wouldn't have any voting rights.
I, I would argue that point, Dennis, because the agreement says that it's, it's the, the members of tri-community landfill. And it doesn't specify, you know, us or Limestone or Fort Fairfield. So, and it's based on the tonnage each community brings in, the board members and so on. It doesn't say, you know, that we'll have two and Limestone will have one. It's based on the rolling average of the tonnages. So I'm not sure, I mean...
Yeah, I, I can see your point.
The lawyer that you consulted, I believe it was also their lawyer.
Could be, I, I didn't ask them to send out the memo.
I think that is the case, so, you know, I don't know how they could have gone along with this without him telling them that, hey, look, you can't do what you're doing.
You've had a couple meetings, could you, could you discuss what you, what you've learned?
Well, I mean, I, I haven't learned a lot about the negotiation with Prescott and, and what was all inclusive in that. I have asked for a lot of financial information from Mr. Draper. I haven't received that yet, maybe I'll receive it on the eighteenth or whatever here when we get together, I don't know. The last meeting I was at, it was brought up about the Cariboo Council wanted to make a change to the inter-local agreement, that it would have to go back to the councils for approval if there was a merger. That suggestion, that was just made that that had been suggested by the Cariboo City Council. There was no motions or anything to do that. The only comment was that if someone would like to discuss that further, it can be put on the agenda for the next meeting.
But I thought it was pretty specific that we asked...
Well, it...
It's quite clear to me.
It wasn't, it was, there was no motions or anything made to change that. And in fact, there seemed to be some resistance amongst the group that was there about changing it, so.
That sounds like it's obvious it has to be done anyway.
So that's where it's at, if somebody asks to put it on their agenda for this month, they will discuss it this month. I don't know if they'll vote on it, but they will discuss it, so that's where it was left.
The, the official email that I got, at least on this inter-local matter, and I'll just read it to you here. This was from Mark Draper, the tri-community director. He says, "As I've been working with Rick Solomon to plan the legal steps necessary for the proposed merger with Prescott, one important aspect has come to light. That is, although the respective governing bodies of Fort Fairfield, Limestone and Cariboo do not have to officially endorse the addition of Prescott as a new co-owner, those governing bodies do need to approve any revisions to the inter-local agreement that are needed as a result of the merger."
Yeah.
To define, for instance, Prescott's number of voting board members. And then he says, "Approval of those revisions to the inter-local agreement will need to be unanimous." That is, all three communities will need to approve of them, as will Prescott.
But it doesn't say that that has to be done before they're endorsed as a, a member of the tri-community landfill. Is that what I understood?
Yeah, yeah, it's not clear on that.
It makes no sense to allow them in if you don't change the agreement to reflect the proper composition.
Right, I'm sure it's a point of negotiation that Prescott's going to say that has to be done.
But I, I hate to make decisions when I don't know what's going on, and it's not because we haven't asked. we haven't asked, but I'm not too confident. I mean, we should be sitting in the bargaining position, I mean, we have a system that works and Prescott's dictating how they're gonna join us. I think we should replace the two members of the tri-community board from Cary.
A motion?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that. I just, just one comment, you know, I've said before, I think we have to add a referendum or put out a referendum for our charter stating that the two board members for tri-community landfill, one must be a sitting member of council. I don't think it's necessary that both are and I only say that because I see some importance in having longevity in there, so that, because council members are changing, they can change every three years or whatever, and I think there's some benefit to having someone that's there long-term that can explain why things were done the way they were and what happened when this was done and that was done.
But I think it would be nice to have a member that would report and see the council-
No, I understand that.
That would be concerned. I mean, one of the members is on record that even if the city council here thought one way, that they wouldn't necessarily vote that way.
Yeah.
And, I don't know, this is not about how many trucks you're gonna allow in and if you're gonna charge $5 or $7, this is a big deal, this is ownership.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're getting-
It's huge, it's huge, yeah.
I agree, I think they should be replaced and then maybe we can change the charter to indicate how later on down the road, whether it should be just by a council member or two or one and one or whatever, but I think we need to make some changes now to protect the issues.
There was motion waiting in a second, so.
Yep.
Alright, we do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor replacing the two existing members? Opposed? Passed?
We'll bring that up at our meeting on Friday and-
That was the last thing I had to report on, Mayor, so.
Reports of discussion by Mayor, any of the council members? I guess the first thing, we're gonna have a meet and greet here on August 24th from 4:00 to 6:00, a meet and greet for our new city manager and his family over at the rec center and we'd, it's a Thursday night, Thursday night, yes. I think it's Thursday night.
It's Thursday.
Yeah. And it'll be, I mean, it's not gonna be real fancy, but there'll be some refreshments and that there and a chance to get to know our new city manager and his family, so I welcome everybody to come and hope we have a good turnout for that. The next thing we wanted to discuss here is that it's been mentioned that we could maybe add the pledge of allegiance to our meeting and provide for invocations, inspirational thoughts on our future agendas, so any thoughts or comments from council?
I agree with the collections back.
I can agree with the pledge, but I don't wanna get into inspirational or whatever. People can get their inspiration in their own places.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, how about a moment of silence?
That would be appreciated.
There you go, see? We're agreeing.
Okay, so it's agreed that we should do the pledge of allegiance? You don't wanna do inspirational thoughts or invocation? Is that a motion by someone then, or?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Alright, next meeting, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Other business?
Yeah, any other, I'm sorry.
Would you make an announcement about nomination papers are available starting today for three council positions, two RSU board members, and the Jefferson-Carry memorial
You could've come up to the mic and said all of that, Jean.
Yes, I could've.
Alright, the nomination papers, there you go. Oh, you're all set, go ahead.
I spoke up anyway, but nomination papers are available today for three council positions, two RSU board members, and the Jefferson-Carry. Come into the city clerk's office, you would need to pick up papers, be a registered voter here in Cariboo, and you need 25 good signatures.
And when are they due back?
I believe it's September 22nd, if that's a Friday.
Yeah.
At 5:00.
Any other new business from anybody on council, Melton Martin?
Yeah, I'd like to appoint, or have you be appointed by the council to be on the tri-community landfill board and anybody else here that would like to be.
You wanna be on that, Jordan? Could we wait until one action is completed before we fulfill another one?
Well, right now, we don't have any members, 'cause we've removed them. I mean, what are we gonna do, go to the tri-community meeting on Friday and say, you guys agree with this? But I think probably what I did-
You mean, it's a temporary?
Well, if you're gonna-
Until we appoint, once it's permanent?
The way the thing is set up today is if, if a representative isn't present, the city manager becomes the second representative from Cariboo, for instance, if we only-
That can't vote.
Yes, he can vote, if we don't have two people there. If there's only one person there now, for instance, the city manager can vote. If the representative from Limestone wasn't there, the city manager from Limestone votes in his place.
Sure.
So.
So I'll amend my motion to appoint Gary Hicken to the tri-community board and I'd like to make sure the city manager shows up to those meetings if possible.
I'll second that.
I'm thinking, just. Alright, we have a motion that I'd want the tri-community landfill board as one of the members, so, and second it. All those in favor? Alright, opposed? One, two, sorry, two. Anything else from any councilors?
Oh, I have one. There's a box spring that's been on the ground on the corner of Herschel and Prospect for three weeks and I'm wondering when that becomes a code violation.
I guess now that you told me, we'll go look at it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And now that you've mentioned that, it just brought something else to my mind. City Hall, this corner of the building right out here, there's an electrical conduit there and it was into the wall or something at one time, it's no longer in the wall. I don't think the wires are connected to anything, but it looks like, you know, it's some kind of, I've probably heard it from three or four people now that have mentioned that and said, you know, that should be secured so that there isn't a fire or something. Well, I don't think there's gonna be a fire, but-
Yeah, it's dead. I had an electrician check the circuit with a meter and-
Well, can we, I mean, David, can somebody come down and just take the thing out there?
I'll take care of it.
That is not hanging there, let alone if it's a problem?
It's from the ground up, though, it's not-
I know that.
Yeah.
But if the wires are dead, just get it out from under the ground and cut it off and-
Just cut one at a time, there's no danger.
No, I know that. I'm not at home.
Don't lick your fingers first.
No. Alright, anything else?
You discussed going into executive session.
Yes, we're gonna go into executive session. Well, thank you very much for coming, everyone, appreciate it.
Move to go into executive session, Title 1, 4056, I think E.
See you, Harson.
All those in favor? Alright.
Discuss the native office.
Thanks, David. Thank you.
Oh, we're over that, so.